Good morning.
I got some. Probably wouldn't sell them.
Go to Army Surplus, had to punch it when I was in there last time.
At Cornell's?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm just going. I'm just like.
Hey, Jerry.
No, looking by. Thinking about. And I wish I was out fishing. Yeah. I think.
Say Ron. Saturday was good, but. And then, yes, Sunday and Monday. Or at our place. Saturday. So it'd pour, and then the sun would come out.
Yeah.
For like an hour, and so we had the grandkids, so we're running out of the boat house, they'd swim for like a half an hour, they go, okay, get out.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. And they don't care what the water temperature is, they'll swim. They swam on Memorial Day weekend. Oh. We're going, okay. It's not nine o'clock, it's time on our schedule, uh, for weekly news, Peter, if everyone will stand, well, uh, Pastor Jerry, favor, open us a prayer.
God, thank you for this beautiful day, and thank you for yesterday and celebrating our independence and freedoms. They would do their part in protecting those freedoms and you can take that area down. Thank you for your grace, your son who came to die for us to be him, the Savior of this town. Plus, your savings of the community, he's in the border, even in disagreeing with the rights to.
Thank you, Jerry, good to see you. If you follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag above the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Steve, start us off.
Well, okay, Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Uh, let's see, public comment, anybody, uh, wish to make public comment today? Anybody online, nothing, nobody, okay, we'll move on consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any question or comment? Who wants to go first?
Yes, this is in reference to the MLDs for the DOM construction, Maureen Patterson for the record, and with the amount of time, energy, and money expense that was spent on this DOM construction, um, and the hundred and sixty acres, uh, I, I wish there had been more respect and, um, to the people in the area, there were no notices sent out, it was just put on the, on the, uh, consent agenda. Also, with something this size, it really should go through, um, subdivision review, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Doug, you were up next.
Doug Patterson for the record. Uh, the, this, uh, the MLDs for the Wind Ranch file, um, we, we could not get access to the, to the MLDs over the internet in spite of them being on today's agenda. Um, so something in planning or other was, was, um, not properly notified. Um, and I believe therefore that these things should be removed from the agenda for this week at least, so that proper notification can be given, so that people can, um, you know, read what, what these MLDs actually say, for instance, um, I initially thought that these were, you know, going to ten acres from going to five acres, and Bill told us that they were going to ten acres, but we could not read it on the, on the internet from the, from the department.
Jake, can you respond?
Oh, why don't we let him finish first?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doug.
There you go.
Um, I, I'll listen to his response.
Okay.
But there's nothing in the current code that requires any notification to the neighbors or even posting on the website for any minor land division, there was a change that was made, given some direction from the board to start, um, adding those files online, um, so the previous director had made a decision, we're gonna start, I think it was MLD one eighty-six from last year, moving forward, so we didn't go backwards and post anything from before that, um, so any, anything applied for after that minor land division, how did it with the date? That we got the direction from the board, so we went from that date forward and added everything to the website. But again, there's no notices sent out to neighbors for the minor land.
And do you re, do you recall when, uh, they originally filed for the MLD, it was, I know it was a long time.
It was May eleventh was the original application date.
Okay.
Of last year, twenty twenty.
When did we change the MLD?
August twelfth was the, the, is when the change happened where contiguous MLDs were no longer allowed.
So because they, they beat the deadline when we made the change, then the laws at the time applied at the time of filing, so that's why.
Um, is, when they beat the time of change, was that when they had done the MLD going to five acre plots that got all protested?
No, I think originally it was set for tens, and then they asked for the.
They originally had applied for five acre parcels.
Oh, yeah, they, okay.
And, and in conjunction, they applied with a zone change, so we know what happened with that zone change, it was denied.
But, well, go ahead. My, my point being that when they change this, does that not change the filing date?
No, they're allowed to modify under the, I'll modify under the law.
Did, did they modify from, from, um, um, their, their other name to Wind Ranch, was that part of the modification?
I don't know, but they modified from five to ten, which is what you guys wanted, you wanted.
Right, and I agree that that's what we wanted, but, but, um, here we have, we have, um, eight modifications, and you said that you had, were changing the laws for the MLDs where they could not make large subdivisions.
Contiguous.
Contiguous, so they're not one right next to each other, right? Um, but they did in fact do a, do a MLD, um, going back where they went to the, took the hundred and sixty acres and divided it up into twenty acre parcels, did they not? So does this not kind of contiguous?
That was normal under that old MLD program before we changed, out of the new language.
Careful with that, because the twenties don't require subdivision in process anyway.
Right. Twenties are currently exempt from the, from the. So, as far as the ten acre change, yes, we did get it, and I have it printed here, we, we got Bill's review on, um, the, the modification code, which is, uh, B C R C twelve dash two six six D, which talks about the modification has to be considered in accordance with the requirements for the original permit application. So you look at the code at the time it was applied for, and that's what you're modifying, you're not modifying based on today's code. Because the, if it, if those had come to the board and had a final decision on the plat, they couldn't do a modification under the previous code, it's under today's code. But because that decision was made administratively and that final decision from the board hadn't been made yet, a modification was allowed.
Um, so, and also the change from DOM to Wind Ranch is allowed, and that's not, doesn't make this a new, a new, um.
Go ahead, Chad.
MLD?
Uh, we've actually had someone get all the way off. That's still, it's the same application, same file, it's the same plat, that was approved by the county commissioner, where all the departments and Bonner County. And so we would allow that up to the time which is reported.
And the reason why the public can't get access to these files, to read them to see what's on them?
It goes back to what Jake said, it was a decision made by our director at the time, no, no, they found the documents provided by the board of county commissioners, are publishing those applications online from MLD one eighty-six to present, and that these files go way back before the seventeen to seventeen.
Yeah, and that, and that non-publication was part of the original ordinance that was passed before Jeff and I came on, so.
So I would still recommend putting these off for a week because we could not get ma, uh, notification.
Um, Reg is next, Reg, can you hear us? Hello, Reg?
Just, she's just muted.
Can we unmute Reg?
Reg Crawford, Sandpoint, Idaho.
There we go, thanks, Reg.
First, I'd like to talk about, uh, what we, I, first of all, I couldn't hear what the gentleman in back was saying because he didn't come up to the microphone, so if I repeat something or ask another question, forgive me. Um, and I want to address what you were talking about, it had been pointed out to the county that minor land division applications were not made public and were administratively approved. And once approved, the applications go on the, the commissioners meeting agenda as a consent item, removing the public from the MLD process. There was no avenue in place for a person to pose the application until after the MLD had already been approved and on the agenda, therefore it unreasonably burdened the public who'd be subject to appeal fees before even being aware for, of the application. So it's not just that it was old code or anything, this was, um, not having these available in, is a legal issue that makes it impossible for the public to appeal before they're approved. Um, and then, these applications were filed on May eleventh, as they said, and at that time, DOM had just received uh, B O C C approval for the rezone of five acres, all eight of the applications, as stated, were to create four or five acre par, four or five acre parcels, creating thirty-two contiguous parcels. The area, all the applications stated the area was zoned for five. As, as stated, the code changed on August twelfth. On September thirteenth, we did a, uh, P R R for all the MLDs, and these applications were still stating the area was zoned for five and were for five acre parcels, and, um, uh, as stated, uh, the agenda came out on Friday when the planning department was closed, and Monday was a federal holiday. While technically it did meet the forty-eight hour notice, it's not good timing for transparency and public trust. In that time, there was no way for the public to question planning on how these applications could be approved. Thankfully, Bill Wilson responded and learned from planning that the applicant had been allowed to alter all eight applications. Upon learning this, I submitted a public request to confirm that all were for ten acres and that, and asked the date that they were administratively approved. Obviously, because of the closure of the holiday, we don't have that information in our hands, and right now, we're technically having to count on hearsay that these splits are for ten acres and that the ten day appeal process is passed. Um, from previous MLDs in today's applications files, it's clear that there's a problem within the system that allows developers to essentially create placeholders for be, boundary line adjustments and MLDs to be grandfathered, we saw that in February with the SAGL MLDs, that they're over a year old, and these have been allowed to be altered. Um, I didn't, I missed it maybe, but I didn't see anything in the code that allows MLD applications to be altered to create completely different outcomes. These applications are now over a year old, and, uh, you know, we have no idea when they were altered. Um, finally, uh, DOM Construction is a well-known and established development company in this region. As such, the code of this county for properly creating subdivisions is undoubtedly known. I question why the applications were allowed to be altered so completely, instead of requiring the applicant to file new and accurate applications that applied both the new code and the subdivision design standards. The points I want to make are, one, MLD applications should be made public prior to administrative approval. And two, there needs to be definitive rules regarding what an application, what an applicant is allowed to change, and in what amount of time, to avoid developers from creating placeholders to grandfather land use, thank you.
Yeah, and I think all, Jake answered all that prior to your.
Well, I couldn't hear a lot of it, so, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak?
Dave had his hand up before.
All right, Davey, Dave, did you want to speak?
There we go.
So there we go. Dave?
No, yeah, okay, no, basically, I just, I want to say I concur with Maureen and Doug and Reg all the way around this thing, uh, it shouldn't be going today, that's all I have.
Okay. Maureen, oh, you haven't spoken yet, go ahead.
All right, Maureen. Hi, good morning, Commissioners, David Trebest, seventeen oh one Edgemere Cut Off. Uh, we have been here so many times, the last time I was here, I sent a letter, built and read it into the record, and for the Grange, we're still opposed to anything less than ten acres on that rural area, so. And I, I understand that, but we know this doesn't appear to be as publicly, um, I don't feel that having to come here this morning was necessary if it had been properly noticed and we had been more transparent in our position as the commission, as the commissioners, okay, so I would just encourage postpone it if you have to, but let's not, w- we're all in favor of only ten acre parcels, so thank you very much, Commissioners.
So what Jake said earlier, and I'll see if I can reencapsulate this to make it simpler, um, there was a loo, there was a couple of loopholes we had to deal with in that law that was, that ordinance was passed before Jeff and I came on, and we were able to, and one of those was advertisement, the other one was contiguous. And those have been resolved, but when someone files prior to a, to an ordinance change, the law is applied based on the data filing, so. And we're actually getting near the end, I think, when, on these ones that were filed previously, so we're almost done with those, but we do have to respect that under the law, so. We can't make changes just to, because we feel like it. Maureen, did you have one more quick thing? We're kind of beating a dead horse here.
Yes, I, I can read them all, of course. Why?
I have no idea, there was no requirement to post them, you, well, you're probably reading the current, the ones that were, that were filed for after the ordinance change.
I think they explained it, at one eighty-six, they started posting those.
I think it was like mid-December.
Yeah, mid-December is when we started seeing.
Something around December fifteenth forward, if I remember right, everything had that, every application for minor land division forward after that date had been posted on the website. So we didn't go back and start adding, you know, previous files. I'm wondering if you looked at the, if there were, if you were seeing some kind of map under the zone change when the zone change was up.
Might have been.
So, and yes, after a decision's made from like a zone change or any other file that goes before a hearing, we do remove those, so we don't clog up, you know, have these long lists of all the applications from previous. Again, like Idaho state law, even under a subdivision, like a lots of ten acre splits and more, or sorry, uh, ten lots and more, there's, there's no requirement even for a public hearing, it's just our code that requires that. So those are all kid, you know, under Idaho law, could be just an administrative approval, it's just by our law, you know, for subdivisions, but these are all minor land divisions, so, or, for lots or less.
Okay, for clarity, I got a question.
Sure.
Let's say I got a hundred acres, and it's zone ten, and I want to make ten, ten. That's a MLD, right?
No, that's a subdivision.
It's a subdivision.
Four lots.
Used to be.
Is a.
You used to be able to do that before we changed it. Now you can't have contiguous, so.
But under, before it got changed, that would be just a minor land division.
Depends on how you applied for it.
Yeah. So if you want to take that hundred acres, break into twenties, and try to do minor land division, you can only be able to do one twenty acre minor land division. You wanted to do the whole thing, you'd have to file for subdivision.
So now.
Now.
And that's a loophole we, that's a loophole we closed and back in September, whatever, August, yeah. Because that's what we were noticing going on over there, where we were seeing these guys taking advantage of it.
And we, we have, we have been denying several MLDs, and we have another one that we'll have on appeal, um, because we denied it, and they don't agree with our interpretation of the code, so.
Today, we haven't, we haven't approved it enough, or approved to appeal on those because it's a hard and fast date of August, so.
I think we already heard two of them.
Yeah, right.
And we denied both of them.
You'll have another one, so. Yeah, we have to deny it.
I guess my question to, you know, some of the folks is, like, well, pushed real hard to keep it as a tens, and everybody agreed that tens is all right, because that's the way it was designed to be. Um, now we're here, um, looking at approving tens, and we want another go around of comments about tens now? Because, I mean, we've had, how many public hearings, we, we, at least four.
At least four.
And you, and everybody's talked about how if you just would have proved it as tens, then none of us would have a problem, but it seems like that may not be the case.
I don't have a problem with tens, I have a problem with, in what I view as improper notification, that we could not find out if these are fives or tens, nor, nor view the actual MLDs, uh, we could not find them on the internet, they were no longer available. So I'm asking that it be put off for a week, so that anybody else who's out there looking at these things has the opportunity to just read the MLDs before, before they're passed, that's.
So Doug, that reason was clearly explained to you and then re-articulated by me why they weren't under the old ordinance, which these were filed under. There was no, there was no posting of, that's been, so this was playing now three times. So I would ask that you take a moment. Please?
So, yeah, I just don't know what it accomplishes, kicking the can, but I mean, I don't, I, I'm sorry, I foolishly, um, when you said you solved the problem of the MLDs, that you solved the problem.
We did, but as I also articulated, we both articulated that when they filed, they filed before the date we solved it, it has to fall under that previous law, we can't just change it.
And, and I think that Doug is, you know, it's quite disingenuous for you to sit there and, and you know for a fact that we've made a lot of these changes by what you folks have brought forward, and rightfully so, you've had comments, hey, we want to see these MLD posted online, and we've done that. Okay, in this situation, because of the way it falls and the dates it falls, we haven't done it, but we have, we have bent over backwards to try to address the issues that you have brought forward, and I think it's, I think it's quite, yeah, I just.
There's a hand up back there, yes, ma'am, could you come up here and talk to the mic and make sure you state your name for the record, if you would, please?
Good morning, I do respect all of you, but I want to make the comment that the trust was broken because you changed, you wavered, you make a decision, but then you listen to the people, so it's building that trust again that people are questioning. It's, we wondered today if you were going to go back, maybe consider the five acres, that's why I'm here. I want to see that you're building the trust back up again.
Yeah, we follow the law, that's what we have this guy, this pretty boy next to me, or he makes sure that we.
Not just for his looks.
He's not here just for eye candy, he's, he's here to make sure that we don't step over line.
I'll take a compliment anywhere I can.
Maureen, I think, Maureen, is, is there anything of substance that?
No, it's. So he has, why is he doing?
You'd have to ask him.
What now?
It actually, yeah, this is the legal.
This is the legal pathway to, to move forward.
No, he just.
Yeah, he'd have to, he would have had to file for, that, that interesting thing that Jake brought up, and I don't know if any, anybody heard it, but under Idaho state law, he can file for a subdivision, and there is no hearing.
My, well, it, it's our code that requires.
It's our code that requires a hearing, so, under state code, it wouldn't have to go before the people, you'd get no comment for it, so. Reg, have you got something really quick, we're burning up time here?
She's already made a comment, so.
Yeah, that's true, I'm gonna go ahead and, we're gonna go ahead and pass.
Oh, wait, everyone else has got a chance, I just have one more comment to Jeff, Jeff, we are okay with these becoming ten acres. What we'd like to see is it go through the subdivision process, which they can do, like you said, under state law, which would require design standards and public input, thank you.
Okay, anyone else that hasn't commented yet, wish to comment again, or comment again, not again, comment. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thanks Jake for your help on that. Uh, emergency management, Bob Howard.
Mr. Chairman, Robert, Director, Wards Management, Record. Southside Water and Sewer District is in the state of emergency due to a mudslide that compromised the sewer line, where homes are impacted. Since June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, many residents of Southside Water and Sewer District who are served by Southside Water and Sewer District have been, have experienced their sewage compromised. This is a public health emergency, in addition, additional actions beyond Southside Water and Sewer District means will be required. Then, reviewed by legal and approved.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash five four, declaring an emergency pursuant to Idaho Code four six dash one zero one one, from section one, for the Southside Water and Sewer District in Bonner County, created by a mudslide, creating an imminent threat to public health and safety. Declaration will remain in effect for at least sixty days or until such time as V O C C receives information that the emergency has been rectified.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, any question or comment? See none, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thanks, Bob. Airport, Dave, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Excellent.
Wonderful, thank you for your time this morning, I have two items for your consideration. Uh, the first item is the twenty twenty-two Leading Idaho Initiative Grant.
We're having trouble.
Yeah, can you speak up a little bit, Dave, we're not, uh, it's not like you're talking into a wash rag or something.
Standby, is that better?
Little bit. Go ahead and yell at your computer so we can hear you.
You darn Commissioners.
Yeah.
Join the club.
All right, thank you for your input there, uh, twenty twenty-two Leading Idaho Initiative Grant Offer to Acquire Snow Removal Equipment for Priest River Airport. This offer is in response to an application we filed earlier this year. The grant offer is in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars and will enable us to purchase needed snow removal equipment for Priest River Airport. The existing equipment has exceeded its useful life and needs to be replaced. The new equipment will increase safety by allowing us to keep the airport operating areas clear of snow during the winter. There is no county match for this grant, I recommend accepting this grant offer.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to Bonner County, accept this grant offer of three hundred thousand from I T D Division of Aeronautics and approve Resolution twenty-two two dash fifty-five.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passes, go ahead, Dave, number two.
Thank you, item number two is the opportunity to release a hangar shelter at Priest River Airport, uh, so that the L S E can store aircraft, conduct aircraft maintenance, and other approved uses as described in the attached lease, I recommend entering into this lease.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
All right, Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to enter into this lease for shelter number four at Priest River Airport, and that the chairman signed administratively.
And I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, any question or comment? See none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Risk management, Christian, we're, oh, there you are.
I'm sure, buddy, thank you. Christian Jocelyn, Risk Management for the.
Low-hogs.
And, yeah. Um, we've had some comments and some, uh, risk concerns about, uh, pets, those non-service animals, was this pets in our vehicles or buildings, and has some recommended policy changes to address that. Um, and that specifically identified some changes in Policy four hundred, that's Rules of Employee Conduct. Also, Policy one thousand and six, that's our vehicle use policy. And then finally, uh, Policy two thousand, which is the safety policy. And I can go through the language if you need on each one, but it's in front of you there. But I, uh, recommend changing these employee policies or these policies to, um, address this issue that's come up.
Okay, thank you, Christian.
Effective when, I guess?
Oh, ever today, I believe, on the memo, but. Or am I wrong?
So it's effective July fifth?
Yeah. That's fine, too.
Uh, Mr. Mountain, er, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Motion.
Mr. Motion.
It was a long.
Mr. Motion.
It was a long.
I like that.
Was that your decision?
Based on the information before us, I move to approve, uh, changes to Policy four hundred, uh, one thousand and six and two thousand to the Bonner County Personnel Policy Manual, effective July fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second, Dave.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, any question or comment?
So we had talked about this a little bit, and it was bring forward something to look at, I guess, and I guess here we are looking at it, I mean, al- although I've read it, um, I, I really think that um, probably kicking it to like August first or something, so that people that have been bringing their, um, can make arrangements or something like that, but.
Did you want to modify that motion, amend the motion?
Everybody else is all right.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I think we need to give a little bit of heads up, it's not, because we haven't really published it widely, have we?
No, I didn't think, think of that, if you, uh, did pass this, I was gonna use a week or so of notices to people, does that make sense?
Wanted, just to play it safe, why don't we go and go with Commissioner Connie's recommendation, and Jeff, if you want to amend your motion to, uh, August, whatever, and then, uh, we'll vote on the amendment, and then we'll vote on the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to, um, change the policies, um, by August first.
Effective date.
Two thousand twenty-two.
Effective date to August first, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the amendment, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and now I will go ahead and, anybody, any question or comment, I need this. And I'll go ahead and, uh, take the vote for the modified motion, all those in favor of the, excuse me, amended motions, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Christian. Okay, planning, Chad, Chad was already on the bubble.
Morning Commissioners, everyone to the public, thanks for being here, um, so we're here for two road waiver requests. I believe the first one on the agenda is for File F E zero zero dash, zero zero one zero dash two two. It is a road waiver request for a family division, um, the property zone, uh, five acre, rural five acre, they are, they want to divide it into two parcels, obviously leaving a remainder, and then one for family, um, both into ten acre parcels, and, uh, they are asking for this road waiver due to the cost, um, that it would require to improve the road to the private road standards for this family division. So that's what's before you today, I can answer the questions.
Okay.
All right, I move to approve the applicant's request to deviate from the road standards set forth in Bonner County Revised Code, Appendix A, Title twelve, for File F E zero zero. Appendix A Title twelve for file F E zero zero one zero twenty two.
Second emotion.
Here, we have a motion in a second. Doug, question or comment?
I'm, I'm confused. Is this um planning number two? It's a road waiver request as opposed to planning number one, which was.
This is number one. This is the family division.
Two of us, two separate.
Yeah.
Okay, they're both end up being road waivers, though, huh?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other question or comment? Maureen?
The record, just wondering where is this? And you said from five acres to two, two and a half acres?
Sorry, no, it's a twenty acre parcel and they're dividing into approximately ten point one six acres, so two ten point one six acre parcels. Yeah. Um, and it's off located off Moose Mountain Road.
And it is zone five.
Correct.
Okay, any other question or comment? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead to the number two.
Okay. Um, so this next road waiver, private road waiver standards uh request is from Olson Engineering and for, this is for a subdivision located in the Idaho Club. On Golden T Estates, third edition. Um, they're specifically requesting a waiver from the centerline radius, which is kind of like curvature um that leads into the subdivision. Um, and there is an email exchange from the North Side Fire District, the captain um with Olson Engineering basically saying this looks good to go. I talked to Brandon Stagland on a personal basis, had a conversation with him about this uh last week on Thursday. Um, asked him to write a letter, I think, because we had a kind of a short weekend and a a quick Monday off. Um, he hasn't been able to drop that letter, but he was cool with this request and he was satisfied with it. Um, they provided a number of reasons as to why they're.
He was cool with it?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, probably not the best words.
At least he didn't say I'm down with that, but.
Engineer term.
Probably had the best words. Um, but uh basically the idea there is to kind of preserve more of the natural vegetation, um, the layout of the lots as as they were designed and approved with that subdivision. Um, and they've worked on a stormwater management plan for this road design as well. Um, so they have, they have quite a bit of capital invested in at this point. Um, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the applicant's request to deviate from the road standards set forth in Bonner County Revised Code. Appendix A Title twelve for file S T zero zero one one dash two one.
Second bet.
Here, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Everyone cool with this?
Yeah.
Okay, see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now I have motion passes.
All right.
Thank you, Chad. Okay, human resources, Cindy.
Nice light moment.
Mm-hmm. I was cool with it.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, we have Cindy Baker for the record. We have three items for today. Uh, the first one is request to recruit. We have a solid waste site attendant and a director of technology.
Okay.
All right. Make a motion based on the information before us to approve commencing with recruitment of site attended solid waste and and director technology effective July fifth, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Maureen? Yes.
Yes, and you can.
Yes, it's, it's a request to refill a vacated position.
Any other question or comment? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go ahead, Cindy.
Uh, the next one is for uh service agreement with Sky uh consulting, uh and that is um for them to do uh work on revision of our furlough policy. Sky Consulting did our first furlough policy that was related to COVID. Uh, and so we're engaging their services to revise that policy and process.
Okay.
But Chairman, based on the information for us, I moved to approve the service agreement with Sky Consulting to provide H R to consolidative service effective July fifth, two thousand twenty two.
Consultative consultant. Are we making up words over in H R now? That's natural word. Insulted now.
About cool.
I would say.
Okay, you second that, Steve?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Here, we have a motion in a second.
That's my motion.
Any, yeah, any question or comment? Maureen?
Not to exceed five thousand.
It won't be that.
No, it won't.
It's, she's really, she's really good.
Yeah. Any other question or comment? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. What last item, Cindy?
Uh, this is a revision to our separation policy, uh, one zero zero two. And it's specific to the language regarding employees required to work on their last day of employment. Um, we have this language already, but it's in our P T O policy. Uh, and it's difficult to locate it. Um, so we're uh adding it to the separation policy and that's been a request uh from managers that have been frustrated with difficulty in locating the policy language.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
All right, based on the information for us, I moved to approve the revision to the separation policy. Uh, one double oh two effective July fifth, two thousand twenty two.
I'll second the motion.
Here, we have a motion in a second. Any question?
I just have a question, so. I look, and it's not highlighted anywhere. Where's the actual change?
So if you go to one oh two point five resignation.
Uh-huh.
Um, it says P T O or cat account hours may not be used for the purposes of advancing the date of resignation, retirement, termination, layoff or other predetermined predetermined separation of employment. For example, an employee who submits a resignation notice will not be allowed to use P T O to cover the last day of employment. Is that working?
Thank you. So if you don't work your last day of employment the day before, the last day.
Could be, yes. Exactly.
Okay, any other question or comment? Hear none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, Cindy. Jesse, Commissioner's office. No longer Jesse, it says Jesse Webster on here. You're what?
And okay, it's okay.
You didn't take your husband's name? Yeah, we're gonna have to recess the meeting and have a conversation.
Later on, when things calm down, I might.
When things calm down.
Anyway, Jesse Webster for the record. Um, the Idaho Department of Land started auctioning off there some some lot pieces, some parcels up at Priest Lake. Five or six years ago, give or take a few years. Um, every year they send us a letter to the B O C C wanting to just inform them of the parcels that they'll be selling or auctioning. And uh they always request a written response indicating that we received a letter and we're acknowledging the fact that they're they're doing this. So that is the item I have before you today.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information for us, I moved to approve the letter to the Idaho Department of Land, State Board of Land Commissioners informing them that the B O C C has no objections to the upcoming two thousand twenty two auction of endowment land at Priest Lake.
Second time.
Here, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment?
Wonder what would happen if we said we didn't?
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, whatever. Yeah.
They go, huh?
Yeah, that's nice.
See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have motion passes. Thank you, Jesse Webster. Uh, it is nine thirty seven and we're going to go ahead and recess for five.